Good afternoon. We welcome you to the Monday, October 13th Davidson County Commissioner Meeting. We'll call it the order. Mr. Schell, if you do the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those who'd like to join me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as a free people. We also thank you, Father, for the extraordinary circumstances that has taken place in the Middle East over there that we hope is going to bring peace to the world. Father, we couldn't do any of these things without you. We thank you for leading this county, for helping us, Father, with your wisdom, strength, and guidance to try to make decisions that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens. We love you, Father, and we give thanks for it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Schell. McLure, if you'd like to recognize the veterans, please.
Do we have any, do we have any veterans with us this evening? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your service. Have you gotten one of our... Have you gotten one of our lapel bins?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
We thank you again.
Thank you very much for your service. Register for public address. Anybody wishing to do so, to sign up, sheets right over here. Please sign up. Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Watford, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. There's been an amendment to the agenda. Mr. Smith has asked that a MOU with the jail be added to the agenda. I guess that would be item... What is it? Nine B? Any other additions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Here none. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If motion carries. Victor Jones?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Victor Jones. Address 400 Country Club Drive here in Lexington. I've met all of y'all many times when I was on City Council High Point. I own a Royal Limousine here in Lexington, but recently I came here. I'm the chairman and the founder, one of the founding board members of the Here Center for Veterans. And for the last two years and some change, we've been doing monthly veterans coffees. One in High Point and the Davidson County one is at the Thomasville Public Library. The only elected official that I've had out there has been Michael Horn. He's a Marine like me. He's awesome. But, and a friend, and I just wanted to extend an invitation. I haven't seen any of y'all there. I know half of y'all friends of me on Facebook and maybe you didn't know, and I apologize. I probably should have sent you individual invitations. I'd love to see you out there. I think Mr. McLure, I believe you're a veteran as well, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. And so the next one's next Wednesday, the 22nd, 10:00 a.m. Because of the voting and stuff that's going on, we're meeting in that room on the right versus the normal room on the left. But I just think it's important that the local veterans see your faces, get to know you, shake your hand, know you're real people. And thank you for their service. It's a good little time. We won't keep you too long. But if you want to call me, text me, email me, Christian might as well has my personal cell phone number. Feel free, and if I know you're coming, I'll make sure to announce, introduce you, whatever, but it would be much appreciated.
You can get DeClerc's card there and let her know the schedule.
You'll send me the information. I'll get it out to all of them. Thank you.
And just give her the schedule and she can put it on everybody's rolling calendar, so.
So I got, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon. Appreciate the invite.
Yes.
All right. Move on to item 7A, public hearing. 2026 Schedule of Values. Mr. Rickert?
I guess the public hearing is open?
I will call it open now.
Okay.
The public hearing is now open.
It's a statutory requirement that we present this anytime we're doing a revow. These folks have worked real hard on this document. It's, I think, over 400 pages that they had to go through.
Wow.
Update everything. It's basically appraisal manual for our staff to be able to bring the values up to what the market is today. And Libby redrew all the neighborhoods. We have over 800 residential neighborhoods. They established new base rates based on the sales. They're busy running reports now to make sure we're hitting our numbers. But this isn't something we just bring out of the air. We do a lot of data that's involved in coming up with these changes. They also added 54 new improvement types for new construction that, things that we didn't have. I mean, construction methods change over time, so we've tried to update all that and added new construction details for today's markets, basically what they did. On the land, they've improved the land factors, given us more control over how to adjust for different areas and topographical features of the land so they can fine tune and get the prices like they should be. Also, Chris here, Chris Ferris, has worked with the appraisers and trained those in the revaluation process. Some of them have never been through it before. We have about 60% that have and 40 that haven't, probably. And so he's worked with them, getting them up to speed and helped implement these changes. So I really relied heavily on them. Chris is also doing our commercial appraisal. We're going to see a substantial increase in the commercial market because I feel like last reappraisal, we were probably a little low on those. So we're going to try to get those up as well. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them or one of these folks can probably help me.
All right. Does anybody got any questions?
I got a question. When they, when you do the appraisal, I guess I need to direct these guys here. When you do the appraisal, is the elevation due to the cost of materials? Now it's making the homes more, what you say, worth more? And if that's so, then why wouldn't, on the flip side, the interest rate have a negative effect and bring property rates down?
Well, I'm trying to understand your question a little bit better as far as elevations. You know, the cost to build from back in 2021 was substantially low as it is today. When you go build a house today, it's going to cost you, you know, 60, 70% more than it would be back in 2021. So we have to look at that. Of course, your appreciation, our depreciation, that comes from the sales and areas, and that's why we went from basically 154 neighborhoods up to over 800 neighborhoods. So we could study little pockets of neighborhoods a lot closer and be a lot more accurate on our assessments in each one of those neighborhoods. So I'm hoping that would answer your question a little bit.
Well, is the, is the rise in cost due to the cost of materials for the builders?
That's most of it, yes.
And so if you look at that, why wouldn't you also apply the interest rate as a negative that would decrease because, I know a lot of people's lost their house because they couldn't get the loan. They couldn't afford the interest rate. And so if you sell one or two, does that justify elevating all the remaining properties around it?
Well, what we do is we look at the sales in each neighborhood, and if we see something that is negatively affecting the sales, we definitely look at that to see if it correlates with the rest of the neighborhood, so.
So if you've got a home that a builder builds and it sells for $375,000, for example?
Yes, sir.
And if that is a percentage above what the last revow showed, okay, do you at that point take that percentage of elevation and apply it to all of the properties?
In that specific subdivision or neighborhood, we probably would if that's the only sale we had. So we also look and see if anything's listed for sale to see if we're accurate. Because we definitely don't want to appraise something that is being asked for less than what we have assessed for. So we do look at that sale as, if that's the only sale we had, we would definitely look at it across the board for that subdivision or neighborhood. That's why we broke them down to a lot smaller neighborhoods so it wouldn't affect more than just what's in that subdivision or neighborhood. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much...
I mean, the interest rates do drop.
Already feeling about, you know, rebounds, not picking on you guys.
No, I understand.
Because it's across probably...
The sales have slowed down somewhat because of interest rates.
Yeah.
So that's sort of put a lid on the increases that we're starting to see, maybe a little decline on the new home prices in some areas, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, we were around 7% a year up until this past year, and it seemed like it just stabilized out. So we didn't look at really pushing our assessments. We kind of backed off on our assessment to be a little more conservative.
I totally get what the Commissioner's saying because the federal interest rate falsifies by increasing the price exponentially. And then the state comes in and says, well, because we have these false interest rates and because the feds won't lower the interest rates like Trump's asking them to, now everything is inflated. And now the state says, well, why is inflated? And we know that this house is X, Y, and Z and it costs this, but we can get this out of it and then take their money now. And I get what you're saying. Knowing that it's inflated at such a rate, why can't we deduct that instead of adding to it? But I think that's something out of our privy. And on the hindsight, I see that because y'all are doing 800 neighborhoods, that's to prevent all the people coming in that would buck the system, and now you're having 10,000 people saying, re-look at my revow. So you want to get it as close as possible so they're not coming in bucking the system too. So it's a caveat, but this is a, it's a federal issue that I wish they would fix.
To make something worse than what you're talking about is a lot of people came in during the pandemic and paid over...
Yeah, they did.
Appraisal amount. They pocketed, you know, brought out 20, 40, $50,000 in some cases and paid more than what a fee appraisal said it was worth, but they wanted the property that bad. So that inflated prices as well.
That's true. I didn't think about that. That's true.
Most current sales instead of the past 10 years or eight years. You know, we try to look at just this past year to see what the market's really doing.
Time for. Sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner.
No, you're good. All right. Any other questions?
Quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, so maybe we had the same question because neither of us were here in the last property revaluation. So I guess if, if I'm a citizen watching and I know this is coming, is there, do we have a range for those who just own a home in the county of like, hey, it's estimated that it's going to increase from X amount to this amount? Is that somewhere out there or can you speak to that right now?
Well, we know from our sales ratio, 67% were about 30% low on average. But that's going to vary in the city. It could be less. It's down the lake. It could be more depending on how desirable and how much demand there is for that property. So it's, it's sort of a wide range from anywhere from 25 to 50% or more.
Okay. How do y'all do the comparison? Like if, like you just mentioned, do you try to look at comparable neighborhoods, what stuff's selling for? Because if you took something at the lake that sold for a million dollars and revowed that versus somebody who lives in an area that paid a fraction of that for their home, how do you figure, how do you compare it? I'm just trying to...
The neighborhoods, right.
Neighborhoods in your vicinity?
Yeah, we broke out like the lakefront properties are its own neighborhood.
Okay.
And we only look at sales to quantify the rest of them in that area. The sales outside of the lake, you know, we haven't broke out into their own neighborhoods where we're just studying that market for that subdivision and looking to see what is affecting that, that market.
Well, also, if you're doing it like you're saying, if you take a house that's new construction, naturally it's going to be way more than somebody that's got a 30-year-old house. How does that shake out for the person that's got the older house? That's not really a fair way to increase their property. I mean, if you're going... That's not really a fair way to increase their property. I mean, if you're going against it.
Everything from nineteen hundred to nineteen fifty-built homes, kind of study that market. And then we increment every ten years and kind of study the market to see what it's doing.
I got you.
Uh, because of supply and demand, these older homes, when there's not much out there for sale, of course, those effective ages increased quite a bit. So, uh, you know, the biggest things we're seeing is the mobile homes since there's not many houses out there. People are paying a lot more for mobile homes than they typically would.
Right.
So, we try to study the actual age built by every ten years to see what the market's doing.
Okay. And as far as the state mandating the revale, how, how often is that done? It seemed to be we used to do it much less frequently than we're doing it now. It's like they're demanding it to be done more frequently.
We were on an eight-year cycle until twenty twenty. The commissioners at that time passed a resolution to make it six years. But because the sales ratio dropped so much, so fast, state steps in and gives us a mandatory advancement. So, we're doing it at five years instead of six.
Okay.
A lot of counties have gone to a four-year revale, so it's not so hard on the public.
Thank you.
And those, those neighborhoods, you just used the assessment, the sales ratio per, per neighborhood?
Yes, yes.
Yes, um, I guess, um, one of the questions I've, I've heard from the public, just because we increased the value don't mean that the property tax won't stay the same. So, you'll reduce the property tax. You can go back revenue neutral.
Yeah.
We have to by law calculate a revenue neutral rate. Once we know what the levy is in January or February, whenever we finish up and...
Right. So, the revenue neutral, the county will still bring in the same amount of money. Your property will just be worth more.
Value worth more. Okay. So, the, the rate won't go down?
The rate will go down.
The rate will go down probably to thirty, thirty-some, thirty-five C N.
Ever the percentages of the sales ratio, you can assume that's a percentage reduction in the rate if you want it to be revenue neutral.
That's our choice.
Revenue neutral's got some other pieces to it. The state allows you to account for your growth over a four-year period of time, the average growth. In other words, they give you credit for, think about it like this, if we didn't have the revale, we would still grow anyway. Per year, they let you have that. And then what they try to do is mathematically isolate the impact of the revale on property tax values and, or the property tax rate. So, by retreat of next year or this coming year, we come in, we'll pretty much have a better idea of what the values look like and then probably an estimated calculated, calculated tax rate at that point. But that's a good, it's a good point that Chairman just brought up because over in Guilford County, I think I saw a meeting the other day, a bunch of citizens showed up to the, to the annual, to the public address, you know, they must've got their notices in the mail, which ours don't go out a little bit later. Well, they got the prelim one, yeah. And so, I mean, they're thinking that their bill's going up forty percent. And remember this too, by each individual taxpayer, yes, this math gets, the, the sales ratio is a blanket average.
Right.
Every individual taxpayer might see a little, if you went revenue neutral as a board, it might not be exactly on the dollars of it, but the goal is to get it back close if y'all, if that's something y'all wanna do.
Right. If I, if I paid five hundred this year, I'd still pay five hundred.
Try to get you back close to that.
Maybe five hundred and ten or four ninety after the revale.
Right. It might be four ninety and your neighbor might be five ten and the two together make five hundred.
Because there's a range, as they said, of the twenty-five to fifty percent. So, it's not gonna be truly neutral for everyone, but on the average.
Right. You can't get it exact no more. When you step back thirty thousand foot at the sales ratio piece, you can say thirty-three, thirty-seven percent, basically.
Uh, this is for Casey. Uh, if I remember right and responsible, Mr. Ricker, that just said while we go, this, when we chose to reduce them the years, that was under pressure by the state.
Was under pressure, right.
By the state. It wasn't Davidson County's decision. It was, well, ultimately it was, but it was under pressure by the state.
They wanted us to go to four.
The other thing, they wanted us to go to four.
By law, you have to do it within eight-year timeframe.
Yeah.
They have always wanted all one hundred counties to do it in four.
Four.
We have resisted that just because of the work it takes. And so, I think we caved at the six because they, they kinda got on to our case in twenty twenty-one. The sales ratio, once you reset the values, in theory, the sales ratio goes back to a hundred.
Yeah.
Perfectly even and it won't stay.
Right.
If it start, if the economy starts to go down and hu- house prices descend, it'll go above a hundred. If it's, if they start to ascend some more, it'll go below. Well, if you go look at the D O R's website, I mean, every county in this state, I think, is headed down below. And the ones that did a twenty twenty-one revale, they're in the same boat we are. Sales ratios is sixty-five percent, sixty-seven, seventy. Uh, they're all having to do it. So, they all got the letter, which is, okay, you've hit below. I think, what is the magic number, seventy or seventy-five?
It's below eighty.
Below eighty. So, once you get below that, they're not gonna, they're gonna make you do it. And so, with this time, we had a choice.
Cause our, our, uh, rate is fifty-four percent. So, they've never been happy with that.
Well, the other thing that happens whenever the sales ratio drops in the fourth year, they're, the public utilities are eligible to be equalized, which means they get a reduction. So, this year, we stand to lose about a half a million dollars from the public utilities.
Yep. We'll lose, we'll lose in the grand scheme of our hundred million dollar in some collections of property tax. We will lose a little bit on public utilities 'cause we're catching it on the back end, hadn't got the revale done yet. Now, fixing the revale will, in theory, four years from now, recalibrate all that back together.
Yeah.
And I don't, I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball, but at least it appears that property values are somewhat, they're not, they don't appear to be ascending anymore. They appear to just be kind of maybe just staying put.
Yeah, they stabilized last year.
Yeah, they don't appear to be going down, but...
A, a lower interest rate could cause that to change. I mean, 'cause then they start buying again. Could change it.
And another big cost of a house you gotta remember is labor. That's probably fifty percent of it. The, the materials is the other fifty. So, the cost of labor just has gone up for people, having to pay people to do more stuff. So, um, it's a hard battle that they've got in Washington in terms of the unemployment rate, but not letting inflation overtake the economy. Like, you know, those interest rate things is hard to figure out, hard to get it right.
What, uh, how many man-hours does it take y'all to, to do a revale? I, I got a couple of questions on that.
I'll let you know when we finish. Right now, they're working about, how many hours?
Ten hours.
Ten hours a, a week overtime.
Wow.
I'm working about six hours a week.
Wow.
Two hours?
So, it's a lot.
So, and you got about everybody working on it?
All hands on deck, all the appraisers and, uh, we've got two new positions that just go out and measure houses, do the fieldwork.
Trying to keep the permits up.
Keep the permits caught up while the other appraisers are doing the actual reappraisal.
That'd be a good story for the dispatch over there to show them how the revales were done. Um, what's, what, what's your history? Uh, do you work for other counties, uh, consultant?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I actually started here, uh, under Joe Silver back in ninety-four. Um, but my father has done this his whole life and I kinda took over his business. So, I've been all over North Carolina.
All over North Carolina. Wow.
Oceans, up to the mountains and I've seen just about anything you can think of. So, uh, it's good to be home, let's put it that way.
So, you actually, um, you appraise down at the coast or, or, and, and the mountains? So, you see the difference, uh, in all different areas?
I've been doing it for about twenty-nine years now.
Wow.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, I've done seventeen revaluations.
Well, I mean, I think everybody wants their property, of course, nobody wants to pay property, or I don't, let me just say that. I don't wanna pay property tax.
There's a movement out there to put us out of business.
Right. Yeah, yeah. I'm okay with it.
And I'd be okay with that too. I'd be okay with going with a sales tax or something and no property tax. So, but I don't know how to figure all that out. It'll take somebody a lot smarter than I am to do that. Um, but anyhow, I mean, everybody wants their property appraised properly. That's what I think. I don't have a problem if mine's, if I feel like it's valued properly. I just don't want it valued too high. Uh, and of course, when it comes tax time, I don't care if it's valued a little lower, that would be okay too. But when, when you get ready to sell it is when most people...
That's right. They wanna...
They, they want their tax, they want it to be appraised properly. Um, of course, most everything up until recently would bring probably more than tax value. Um, that's, that's the way I've kinda seen it.
Unless it's something we don't know about.
Right, right. So, you know, I, I felt like most people always ask more than, than tax value for their property. But anyhow, I appreciate the hard work. Again,
Yes, sir.
Nobody wants to pay it and, uh, but that's what keeps county government running. So, you know, if you want raises for folks and you want employees to, to provide the services that, that the counties do, then, then you gotta have property tax under the structure that we have now. So, any other questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the audience to come up and, uh, all right, no questions from you guys? All right. It's a public hearing. So, anybody wishing to speak in favor or the opposition of, uh, of the values and standards, you're welcome to come up and do so now. All right. See you no one. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, Debbie, I guess this'll go on the, um, October thirteenth, uh, I'm sorry, October twenty-seventh agenda? All right. Uh, is that good with the board? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on. Y'all didn't have any opposition, so be careful out in the parking lot, okay?
Go home, get some rest.
All right. Move on to seven B, Public Hearing, Project Cobalt Green Economic Development. Here comes a tax, a property taxpayer. Uh, Mr. Martin, I'm gonna declare the public hearing open if you'll, uh, lead this one off.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll be very brief in my introduction. Uh, this is a, uh, Project Cobalt Green is an expansion of an existing industry here in Davidson County. Um, they are investing fifteen point four million dollars in capital investment, uh, creating a hundred and twenty new jobs with an average wage of seventy thousand dollars a year. Um, the, um, and I can say that the company's name is Central Carolina Seeding. Uh, Mr. Dylan Spears, who is the president of Central Carolina Seeding, is here this evening, would like to speak to the board. Um, the company is part of their, um, investment, they are seeking an infrastructure grant from the Department of Commerce, um, and has asked the county to handle the match on that grant, um, up to a hundred and five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Um, that is for a sewer line extension on Long Sixty-four over to where the new sewer line is connecting to the regional system. Um, that is being done in lieu of, uh, traditional economic development incentive. That dollar amount is based on the, uh, fifty percent over three years on the capital investment when the project is completed. Um, with that, I, that is all that I have and I know that Mr. Spears was wanting to speak to the board this evening.
Yeah, come on up. So, that new regional line we putting in is already, uh, bringing some revenue in. Is it Mr. Spears? Glad to have you.
Mr. Chairman, you and the Commissioners are doing a good job bringing business to, uh, Davidson County, right? It's, uh, good that you put that line in. Uh, my name's Dylan Spears with Central Carolina Seeding. Uh, just wanna say thank you to you all. Uh, business has been here in Davidson County. We came over from Forsyth, uh, about three years ago, uh, and have, things have been great. Really do appreciate it and, uh, are looking forward to, uh, expanding, continuing our, our growth. A lot of the work that we do are on, uh, Department of Transportation projects throughout the state. And, uh, based here in Lexington, we're able to service, uh, the entirety of state of North Carolina and beyond and look forward to, uh, to continuing to grow here with you all.
That's awesome.
Well, Mr. Spears, we glad to have you here. I can tell you that. And, um, I see all the trucks going in and out your place all day long and you got quite an operation going there and, uh, took a facility that had closed down and, and, uh, brought it back to life. So, you know, now, uh, spending fifteen, sixteen million on a new office complex is, uh, gonna make it look even better. So, anybody else like to speak, uh, to Mr. Spears, uh, and welcome him to Davidson County?
I'd just like to tell you thank you. Uh, so many people around the neighborhood talk about what a great job you've done keeping it clean and being, you know, consistent with the neighbors and you're a good guy and the help you do that nobody ever hears about. We hear about it. So, thank you. I appreciate you just being a good man and a good neighbor.
We're trying. We, uh, we certainly appreciate what you guys, uh, are doing here to help us out and look forward to that. It's, uh, that property's been a blessing, you know, it's, uh, we're able to store significant amount of materials and everything else has been really good. Looking forward to hopefully working a turn lane out. Unfortunately, saw another accident with a road tracker in front of there today. Um, but, uh, look forward to, we're talking with the D O T there and look forward to continuing to grow.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe they'll forelane it to, um, Ashboro soon.
You know, we are in the road widening business.
One other call out for those, again, in the audience, for those watching, uh, you had mentioned to get a hundred and twenty net new jobs and an average annual wage of seventy thousand. And I think we've talked about it before when we talk about the businesses that are coming here, but the average for the county is, I think we looked at it at one time, fifty, fifty times.
Seven forty-nine.
Yeah, so, far above, so very good. Yes.
We're excited. We appreciate it.
Uh, just unless you got, you, you...
You good?
How you moving? Okay. I just wanna say that, uh, you know, I've been here twelve years and one of the biggest things I heard from our constituents and our citizens out here was, "We don't have any jobs." And since that time, we've made great inroads in bringing jobs to Davidson County. Now, what that does for me is this, I get to look into the eyes of our students sitting behind their desk who wonder what tomorrow holds for them. And we're trying to create opportunities where those kids have a future in Davidson County and don't want to travel long distances, they can stay in the county that they love.
That's right.
And I wanna thank you for that.
Absolutely. We've got a nationally, uh, recognized apprenticeship program. You know, specifically, you know, our guys are the folks that grew up on farms, right? They're running mini excavators, putting in silt fence, hydro seeders, tractors, that's what we do. And I mean, you find someone that, whether they wanna go to trade school or go be an attorney, uh, whatever that may be, you know, for the, the folks that don't necessarily wanna do that, we, uh, feel like we offer a pretty good living for them and, uh, look forward to doing it out of here.
That's awesome.
Thank you again, Mr. Spears, and I'm gonna invite the public up to, uh, see if we got any opposition here, okay?
Understood. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against? Okay. See you none. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, may I have a motion in a second to, uh, approve the request of the incentive?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Spears. And wish you and your team the best, okay? Hope, hope to have you here many more years. Get that white house down on the lake, will you? All right. Rezoning request, uh, Mr. Crick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners. We have one rezoning request tonight and that's a request by Gary D. Willetts to rezone property located in Boone Township, tax map fifteen, a portion of Lot Fifty-nine D containing point seven-three acres more or less. Said property is located on the south side of Wilson Road, approximately four hundred and eighty feet east of the southernmost intersection of South NC Highway one fifty. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA one, Rural Agricultural District, to that of RA two, Rural Agricultural District. If the board will recall, this application has been continued a multitude of times. Uh, it was originally submitted and heard by the planning board back in June and we discovered some, uh, some issues with the lots in question. Uh, it was continued so Mr. Willetts could, uh, or Mr. James, who's the property owner, Mr. Willetts gonna be the tenant. And I think he's here tonight, but, um, so that they could do a recombination and they've gotten that done. And, um, I will, with that information, we're ready to hear it and I'll yield the floor back to you, Mr. Chairman, to open the public hearing.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open. Um, Mr. Willetts, uh, if you'd like to come forward and explain the request. How are you this afternoon?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
I'm just trying to get this done so that I can put a single wide on it, which would be more affordable for me. And I have to get a double wide or stick build a home, 'cause I can't afford neither one of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Willetts?
No, sir.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this rezoning? All right. See you none. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Um, Mr. Crick, what is staff's recommendation?
Uh, staff's recommendation, um, we're gonna support the application. There, if you'll divert your attention to the overhead, there's already a single wide here on Fifty-nine C. There are two back here. This was an old manufactured home park. There are some, uh, businesses in the area. This, uh, just off of the, uh, page here is Oral's Food and this is one fifty to give you an idea of where this is located. The L-shaped, uh, portion there in yellow is what we're looking at doing. Uh, this whole property around Fifty-nine Uh, this whole property around Fifty-nine C is now been recombined, so. Staff feels like that, um, given the mixture of different land uses in the area, that this rezoning would not be out of place as, uh, and we would point to change or changing conditions in the, uh, housing market with respect to costs, uh, warranting a, a mixture, we need to have a wide diversity of, of housing types for, for, um, every economic group, and, um, I would point to policy statements, um, from the Land Development Plan six one, six four, six five, six ten, seven one, seven three, and seven four in support of the application, and the staff would recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to either deny or approve the rezonation?
My question, Mr. Crook first.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Explain to me, cause I don't know how it works.
Yes, sir.
Exactly here. How can an applicant, I mean, uh, someone who's not the property owner make an application for zoning change?
Um, as long as the landowner's signature is on the application, it is there, Mr. Mr., yeah. Mr. Thomas, that, that's required by one sixty D, that's law now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crook.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll continue my motion to approve this based off the statement of consistency that you've put together, sir.
Thank you.
Second. We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, good luck, sir.
Enjoy your home.
Been approved, yep.
I, I would like to say something about what we were talking about earlier, real-world application. You, my son's at Eggers, he, he's, he's in the apprenticeship program at Eggers, so that's real-world application of the economic incentives, and, yeah.
Come on, man.
They don't, they don't have to out-migrate to Greensboro or Winston-Salem or go to Charlotte. They've got good-paying jobs here and, and it's, it's working.
Amen.
Yep, so, thank you guys for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And something I forgot just a minute ago, I wanted to thank Jason, I should've done it a while ago, for his hard work with the, uh, he's worked with Carolina Seating for quite some time.
Oh, yeah.
With the, with the E D C, his, his position, he, he wears two or three different hats, as y'all know, and one of them's with the E D C, and, uh, this one here's took quite a bit of work to try to put it together, and they was just trying to get the sewer worked out and a bunch of the different stuff that they had, uh, took some work, so thank you for the hard work. If he hadn't have put that much work in, it might not have happened, okay, I mean, cause...
Good job, Jason.
Appreciate it. Took some work.
Good job, man, that's great.
And I should've thanked you in front of those gentlemen there, because I know they appreciate the hard work you put in too, so. All right, so we'll move on to, um, the consent agenda, anybody wishing to, uh, pull anything off the consent agenda?
If, if nobody sees anything, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, if there's no debate in any commission.
I don't, I don't hear any opposition, so do I have a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second, all, all in favor? I think Chris made the motion, and then, I'm, I'm gonna take it as...
Either way, I'll second it or... We gonna double motion, Chairman?
We, we'll let him second, it's, um, since it was the second motion. Uh, all right, nine A, vacancy of the Handy Board. Who wants to lead this one off?
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with you about this one last week.
Right.
We had a request from the manager from the Handy Sanitary Board that they had a member, Norman Hunt, resign from the board, and he was a Davidson County person that was on the board via the election, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one thirty-eight dash fifty-four, um, it is up to the Board of Commissioners to fill any vacancy that comes on that board, and we have a letter from Handy Sanitary from Attorney Jonathan McGarian requesting that Mr. Daniel Efford, the third of Denton, be approved to that slot, for you all to approve if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I got a letter today, um, and I checked around too. Now, we, we could make an appointment if we wanted to ourselves, I guess the appointments, like Debbie said, on the, she called me about it last week, and I had her to check into it a little bit, and, uh, so we actually do make that appointment, so. If we didn't wanna take their recommendation, we could appoint somebody that, that we feel like, uh, we'd wanna put on there, but I called around, I called around, checked on this gentleman today and got positive feedback from some of the local folks, uh, down that way, so, if y'all good with it, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, and it's in Denton.
Right, 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 so I called some of the elected officials down that way, and they all seemed to speak highly of him, and I think he's gonna run for this seat, uh...
It would be through twenty twenty, the end of twenty twenty-six.
Right.
And then he would have to run for reelection.
He'd have to run again, so this'll just fill out Mr. Norman's term, so.
Motion to approve this, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, all right. Casey, we'll move on to, um, item nine B.
Yes, sir, um, it's a lot of paper, but this is actually a really simple item. Um, inside the jail, your jail medical contractor is a company called I M S, and it's ran by, well, it's run by a couple of folks, but one of the main doctors that runs is a guy named Dr. Pyleen. Uh, y'all, he's been here before the board, spent some time, uh, very good, very good gentleman, uh, they do good work up there. Um, part of our contract with them has embedded in it already to convert things, uh, well, they've already been in the process of converting over electronic medical records, in other words, getting away from hand scripts and those kinds of things, which is, obviously, as you can imagine, it's not very efficient. I talked to Dr. Pyleen today, and he's, he has tried this with another company, that he wasn't satisfied with the results in terms of, and they quote him, they were a little too large, in other words, he wasn't getting the customer service that he thought he needed. What you got before you is an MO, several pieces of paper by Miss Congo's right for the attachments, an M O U with I M S to outline putting three or four laptops on our network that's dedicated to this, this, uh, electronic medical record service. They, the purchase of the laptops can be done through the sheriff's office, and then inside that agreement, Dr. Pyleen is to reimburse us back within thirty days, so it's no cost to us. Cause we, we'll want them to our specs that Daniel and I T and them allow on the network. Um, and then the second piece is the actual company called Cadmus. This is allowing them to have access to the network where they can go inside Flex system and grab, um, inmate medical records, which they will need, and there'll be some of, will be sensitive information, HIPAA-type information, so the out, the agreement basically outlines the adherence to all those things. It's a lot of paper to say, basically, these, these two agreements are allowing these folks on our network. Should we get, should we leave I M S, should we leave, or should I M S leave Cadmus? The data is ours.
Okay.
So, the cost, Mr. Chairman, it, there, there's already a cost for E M R built into our current contract with I M S because they started this process, and they're simply now migrating from one other company that they didn't, didn't, wasn't happy with how things went to this new company. And according to Dr. Pyleen, this gentleman here is not only responsive, but they've gotten the staff trained within, I think he said, like a week or so. Um, and they are up and running, ready to go, wanna be getting going here and getting, getting away from handwritten stuff, basically, as again, you can imagine, that is probably not the way you wanna do it. It also allows for more, um, on, you, you don't need staff to come into the facility constantly.
That's right.
So, you don't need doctors to come in to do a script inside, handwriting, they can do it from somewhere else, so it's gonna be, we get back to labor again, when you can't find folks to work in the medical field, you gotta have them where they can do wherever you, they can, home or wherever their office is or whatever.
It's risked version, we stay away from that, especially HIPAA, medical records, stuff like that, I think this is a, a no-brainer.
Everybody good?
Aye.
Any questions?
Just a quick question. With regards to the security of the sheriff's office information, this, this keeps them within the guidelines of specifically retrieving medical information pertaining to inmates.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I spoke to the gentleman at Cadmus this morning too, now, he, you know, in going in the Flex system and getting data, anytime you let a contractor on an I T project go into some database, you know, they see things. That's basically what this amounts to, is, you know, his ability not to roam around in other parts of the system, et cetera. The main thing I wanted to make sure was the cost piece, and when Dr. Pyleen this morning said the magic words, was, you, you already got this inside your existing agreement, it's no more cost to you. If I buy the laptops, then I'll reimburse you, I said, I want that stated in here, no offense, you know, that's just good business. But he's like, no, that's fine, you know, and I said, well, then it's no cost to us.
Could, could you explain your concern a little bit, why, where I would know where you was coming from, I think I know where you're coming from.
There's just all kinds of information in that system, and somebody, another entity having access to it, I just wanna make sure there's
a firewall.
And prohibitions of a fine line as to what information they're going in thereafter.
Yeah.
Should they see something else, just prohibit them from doing that.
But I don't guess there's no way to stop that really, as long as you got...
So, Daniel is, Daniel's putting the firewalls in.
Yeah, Daniel have to be in charge of kinda monitoring.
So, that, that our doors on our network block this individual from seeing the things other than what he's requiring.
He won't get admin rights, Mr. Chairman, he may get view rights to see certain data, but not admin rights.
That's right, view rights, and we control it.
And, um, and we can control what he views, I assume, I can talk to Daniel about that.
That's what I like about it, because it's risked version, we're, yeah.
Well, and that's something, if he needs to talk to Daniel, then that needs to be discussed right here now to make sure whoever has the admin rights and...
Yeah.
To make sure nobody can look at the information, I guess, that you're concerned about, you know?
Well, we would, we would have a legal liability to protect that, so the county wouldn't be liable.
Cadmus would be S I G S compliant, and that governs the information that we're sharing, and that we've already discussed, the general information that they would be receiving, Commissioner. And so, they were, that way, we're not in violation of S I G S.
Amen.
And HIPAA, so that's one of my concerns as well.
Amen.
So, we're, we're, we're within the parameters of S I G S.
That answers my question now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, you good with this?
Yes, I, I'm in favor of it, I think it's excellent, I think it's a, a good way to bring Davidson County up to, you know, to modern technology, and it's like Casey said, uh, the doctor can actually go in remotely since it's web-based and look at the inmate's medical records, um, that's being put in live, and because right now, they have to be in-house, and they have to look at the file.
Yeah.
And, and he may be, you know, cause he's grown, his business has grown, and he's stretched very thin, he may be five counties away, and where we need a doctor to look at this, a particular inmate, because they may be coming in off the chain, and we need to give them something to calm them down, they can look and make sure there's, uh, no issues there, and they can go ahead and issue a stream. Major Louis also mentioned to me the other day about a records request we had, where he had to go backwards in time before they tried the E M R with the other company, and it was literally scanning handwritten stuff in. I mean, think about how much time that wasted for Major Louis, plus the nurses up there trying to scan the stuff in to fulfill the records request. With it being electronic, you got it, and just hand it off, if you can, by law, whatever you can do.
Right, that's right.
It's a whole lot easier to understand that language too, cause right now, looking at some of that handwriting, I thought my handwriting was bad. And I mean, bless the ladies' hearts, I know they're, they're busy, but I mean, you know, the busier you get, sometimes sloppier you get. I think this is gonna be much easier and it's gonna be just more efficient.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
That was good.